All right, good evening, Tuckahoe and everybody. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals for, what is this, September the 14th, 2016. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Nancy, please take the roll.
Member Gallo.
President.
Member Scalzo.
President.
Member Palladino.
President.
Member Jackman.
President.
Chairman Ringwald.
President.
And then, member Dan Lang.
Excellent. All right, the first order of business is we need to approve the minutes from a couple of meetings. And only members that were at the meeting are allowed, obviously, to vote on the approval or discussion. So the first will be the approval of the minutes of the June 8th meeting, 2016. Any members have any comments or discussion? Any comments or discussion from the public? Seeing none, let's make a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes of the June 8th meeting. Again, if you are not here, you need to abstain.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Okay. All in favor that we're here?
Aye.
Take your roll.
Oh, I apologize, thanks.
Member Scalzo.
Approve.
Member Gallo.
Approved.
Member Jackman.
Abstain.
Member Palladino.
Approved.
You were present for June 8th.
Oh, June 8th, I'm sorry. Proof. I thought it was the most recent one.
Okay, thank you, very good. Now we need to have a motion to approve the minutes of the July the 13th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Any second?
Second.
Anybody have any discussion or changes to the minutes of the July 13th meeting? Seeing none? Can you poll the board, please?
Member Ringwald.
Approved.
Member Palladino.
Approved.
Member Daniel Lang.
That's it, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a pretty short agenda tonight. The Marveldale Road is adjourned, that's the gentleman with the storage containers that we had given six months to come up with a resolution. He needs to come before us next month to see what he's going to do to become compliant. That brings us to 37 Lincoln Avenue. Do we have the applicant? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gregory Gull, represent my firm, Gregory M. Gull Architect PC, 33 Heritage Hill Road, Tarrytown, New York.
And why are you before us tonight?
I'm here to represent the owners of 37 Lincoln Avenue in their request for a variance for their property to build a deck on grade in their rear yard. And we require two variances, a rear yard variance and side yard variance to the existing non-compliant structure.
So basically, you're putting a deck over the existing stone patio that's there today?
Yes, in the rear yard, there's an existing concrete pad that is non-compliant.
Right.
And the owners would like to put a deck or a raised structure approximately eight inches off the top of the existing concrete pad, covering the existing concrete pad, as well as additional, a few additional inches to the side yard, but not to the side property line.
And as you told us previously, there's egress along the side yard with the new deck going up.
Yes, there's no change to the existing egress from the rear yard at all. There's no change to the access or egress, as well as the width of the access or egress from the rear yard.
Very good. Any board members have any questions?
Yes, basically, what you're doing is putting, we are mirroring exactly what's there now with the new deck.
With different materials.
Yes.
And a little extension towards one of the side yards.
Correct.
My question is, when was this existing deck installed?
It's not an existing deck, it's an existing concrete pad on grade.
Okay, when was this existing concrete pad on grade installed?
I have no idea.
I mean, because that's my, my only concern about this is that we're not really sure, you know, when this happened vis-à-vis the zoning laws. Was this an illegal pad based on the side yards that we are just now legalizing because they're going to put something on top of it? If it's something that was built in 1910, before our zoning laws existed, I'm more comfortable with that. I'm just, just have questions as to when it was done. If it was done 15 years ago, 20 years ago, and the building department wasn't aware of it, and that was during the time that the zoning laws were in place, then, you know, I have, I have an issue with it, other than that.
It was probably built the same time as the non-compliant house was built.
Which was?
Roughly.
So it's an old?
1925.
Okay, that's my concern.
When did the current owner purchase the property? Six years ago, and it was there in 2010? Thank you.
And between the time they purchased it and this application for a variance, the owners of the property did apply for and receive a variance to do work on that property.
But it doesn't have anything to do with the deck, but...
Well, I'm just giving you some history.
Yeah, if the deck was not compliant before our zoning laws...
It's not a deck, it's a concrete pad on grade.
The concrete pad on grade, if it was placed before our zoning laws, then legalizing it or anything above it, which is what we're doing, is fine. It's just that if somehow it was snuck in after our zoning laws and no one knew about it, then I have concerns. But if it was done back in the 20s, then, which is before our zoning laws were, you know, modified, then I'm fine with it.
Based upon my professional observation of the house and the concrete pad, they were built at the same time.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions?
I have no concerns. It's a safe structure, it leaves egress from the property unchanged, so I'm...
No, I would just also point out that the, the house structure itself is right up against the property line as well.
Yes.
So this is not moving any closer to the property line than the existing house structure. So it's just one of the lots in Tuckahoe where they're very tight, quite honestly.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion to open the public hearing on this.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Hi, you can step up to the microphone, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Thomas Seropoulos. I live 18 Highview Avenue, right behind those people which he say he have a deck over there. I don't see any deck over there. They had a deck when they first bought the house on top of it, and they, we were over here, and now we allow them to close it to make a room, which they did. Now, they want to expand, they should have bought a commercial property and built it or whatever they wanted, nobody bother them, they can build it all the way to the city. I don't want them come all the way to my wall. Or one of my neighbors over there did not get a letter either. And two of them I talked to, they got a letter. In Highview Avenue about half a block up, got a letter, and next door to him is the guy got a letter. And I got a letter, I had to sign for it.
Can I ask...
Register.
Sorry, sir, can I ask you, are you concerned that they're going to build additional structure, like an additional room on the back of the house?
Yes, yes, they're gonna, they're gonna do the same thing. They want to get the permit, they built all the way to the edge of it, and pretty soon you're gonna see they start building.
I mean, that's up to enforcement, correct? We're approving only for this on-the-ground patio, and then you would have to enforce. If anything's done, we're gonna have this on record.
If they get the okay, if they get the okay, they will eventually trying to build, they should have bought a commercial property and do it. I do not understand everything. They trying to expand as the house was? No, they trying to go further up, more to the people. Probably they want to come in to my place, you know, all the way to my place.
How far is the setback from the...
Yeah, what's the rear setback, Bill?
It's supposed to be 25 feet, I think, and it's only 21 feet.
So four feet, okay.
But you do understand what the gentleman's proposing to do, correct? He has a flat stone patio.
He's trying to do the same thing, he had a deck on top of it over there, he closed it, he make it a room.
This is going to be a ground level, ground?
He wants the permit in order to, to build all the way. I don't know, maybe he's trying to knock up the house and build the...
Well, I can tell you, sir...
Saying that he wants to extend his house?
That's it, he wants the permit now.
The permit will only be for the deck, not to extend the house.
And the city inspector say to them, no, I don't know who's the inspector.
And sir, they would have to come back in here to apply for that, and I can tell you, we would not approve that. I can tell you absolutely we would not.
Yeah, well, they say, the city inspector told them, no, the city knows about something The building inspector who denied them to issue, you know, that's what the letter say, the city knows better. And I stay with the city inspector. Anything else?
Well, if I can tell you why the city denied this, Bill, could you, would you mind explaining why the city denied this? It was not because they were worried about him coming further back to your property. The, the problem is actually that side yard that's existing, correct? The very small gap between their house and the fence.
Yes, side yard is like two and a half inches, and it required is nine feet.
Right, so it's already an exist, that's where, that's already what the house is. The reason they were denied was not because they were coming towards your property with an additional structure, correct?
Right, it's only the on-grade deck.
Only the on-grade deck, okay.
Thomas, I just want to make sure you understand that.
I want to go in the record that I denied them like the city inspector.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
Hello, my name is James Marshall, I'm the, the owner of 37 Lincoln. I just feel like I should defend myself a little bit here and clarify, when we moved in, well, when we bought the house, five or six years ago now, we did an extensive renovation. And at the time, the house had a sunroom on the backside that was enclosed, it may have been a patio or something at one time, but it was enclosed on the second floor above the kitchen. And it was unheated, so we decided as part of our renovation to make that a year-round space. It didn't extend the footprint of the house at all. We raised, the roof was flat, we raised it a couple of feet inside, and I think that's what the gentleman was referring to. It didn't extend the house footprint in, in any way. And as far as our deck proposal is going, it's just a matter of essentially putting a deck on top of the existing uneven concrete patio. We have no plans to extend the, the size of the house in any direction, so...
Right, I just want to note for the prior gentleman, he stated that on record, he's on the record now stating that he's not going to use this for any further expansion of the, of the, the house structure itself, so... He stated that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Anyone else from the public? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Mariana Seropoulos, 18 Highview Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York.
Aye.
That was my father, so I just want to explain, so it's the side of the house that they want the extension, the extra space? Well, is that correct?
Cover the existing patio.
Plus some extra on the sides?
Literally, I think...
No, you can't, please sit down.
Did I get pictures?
Just a moment, just a moment, you'll get a chance, thank you. So, so if you want clarification, there's an existing patio, it's non-conforming now. It's too close to the side. It's non-conforming, the existing patio that's been there, 100, however long it's been there.
I have nothing to say about that.
All right, fair enough. And the gentleman wants to put a wooden platform above it, he's going to extend a couple of more inches to the side, making it just two more inches non-compliant. That's basically what he's here for. Since it's not compliant, he must come forward and then ask for a variance.
Okay, well, I talked to both the neighbors bordering that house, each side. One of them is fine with it, I guess, because I don't see him here. And the other house, they did not receive a letter at all. But unfortunately, he could not be here because his son had something that he had to take him to. So I was wondering why that person didn't get a letter in the first place. It doesn't seem, you know...
It doesn't, and I don't know the answer to that.
Bill, is a notice also placed on the property that they're appearing in front of the board?
Yes, it's there.
The sign, I placed the sign that the building department gave me.
Today?
No, I placed a sign on the property.
I saw it today, it's very hard to see, it's on a tree in the back.
On a tree that's above called the grove.
I had noticed it today.
It would have been blocked the property, I was a little confusing to everyone, I figured out a hole that was on the...
So it was publicly posted and visible from the street?
I only noticed it today, I go by there every day.
And I did it the day that I received it from the secretary from the building department, which was the... They would require from the...
Sorry, okay, so hold on, hold on, we're gonna have you wait for a little bit, and then we'll have you respond if we could let her complete her.
So that was my first concern, that the person next to him didn't get the letter. So we've been there 25 years, and I do know that the asphalt is there, but I just stepped outside and called my mother who has the memory of an elephant, and she doesn't remember there being any asphalt there, and we've been there 25 years. Whatever you call it, I don't know, asphalt, cement, whatever you want to call it. Okay, well, she doesn't recall it, and she's very on memory. I know it's just whatever hearsay, but trust me, she remembers things, anyway. So, you know, so that's the second point.
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
What, what's your kind of concern here? What are you worried about? I'm just, just in general...
Well, we're worried, you know, coming closer to our property, we don't want that, it might ruin our view, you know, we don't want any changes.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, so what are you concerned about ruining your view as far as, are you worried they're going to build a structure there, or what are you worried about?
They might, they say no now, but how do you know, in five, 10 years, you know?
Well, they've, they're on the record saying they will not, that's, that would weigh...
They can't change their minds in 10 years?
And they would have to come in front of the board, and that...
And then you approve it, just like you approved the upstairs, which we had no problem, we attended that meeting and approved it ourselves, we said sure. We had no problem with that, but...
But you have to understand, it's also hard for us to say, well, there's a possible chance someday, 15 years down the road, you're going to come back in here and try to build a structure. That's very difficult for us to, they're asking for what in our, in my opinion, my personal opinion, is a very reasonable thing, that's not going to be in your view, it's going to be on the ground, it's going to be something there is already there, which is a kind of, I'm assuming, rather ugly-looking concrete. So it's going to look a little bit nicer, it's not going to impede your view, and it's not going to...
You don't know, in five years, he might say, oh, I want to build.
And he might, but it's hard for us to make those decisions on conjecture, essentially, that if he does something in the future, we have to, you know, that's, that's very hard for us to kind of...
But if he were to want to build anything else, he would have to come to this board for approval.
Yes, but you know, you'd probably approve it, just like with the balcony upstairs.
No, 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 no. We take into consideration a variety of factors, and one of them is the five-pronged test, which we're well schooled in. So just because we approve something that is just right on top of what's existing, doesn't mean we're going to automatically approve anything that they may want to build in the future.
Well, in any event, I think it's going to, you know, ruin my view.
How would it affect it if it's just a little bit above what's there now?
If the inspector said no for a reason, there must be a reason, because...
But that's, okay...
He's a professional, not his business.
But that's why, no, no, he's a professional, and what his job is to interpret the law. And our job is to decide whether a person is granted a variance. It may come a day with you, with your property, where you need a variance, because the laws were, the houses were built a long time ago, and the zoning laws were changed, and many, many people, when they want to do something, require a zoning variance, and they come to this board. And what we have to determine is whether there'll be a dramatic impact to the neighbors, a change which is dramatically affects you and your other neighbors, and that's why we listen to people like you. And we have to determine whether that impact is egregious and is going to really hurt you, or whether the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to you.
I understand, but why did the inspector say no then?
Because it's non-compliant.
Because it's non-conforming.
Entire house, for example, even if they weren't building a deck, let's say they just wanted to, bad example, replace a piece of siding on the side of the house, or who knows, fix something on the side of the house. The entire house is already non-compliant because it's right up against that fence. So technically, by the book, he has to say you're non-compliant because it's, the structure's already so close to the edge of the property. But it's always been that way for 100 years, so it's almost a technicality where they have to come in and say, you know, look, we're already this close to the fence, we're just changing what's there right now. Does that kind of make sense? So we have a lot of these, actually, where people come in and say, look, I'm not getting any closer to my neighbor, I'm not getting any closer to this neighbor, I'm just doing something, but my house is already too close to the property, and I can't, you know, pick up my house, obviously, and move it. So a lot of it's just based on the kind of technical zoning language that we have versus these, like you were saying, these very old structures that were built back when people didn't care that they were right on the property line, so... But we appreciate your comments, and you know, it's something that, when this does come back, if they try to do a structure, that would be taken a lot more seriously when you come back and you said your comments. And obviously, I don't think anyone would approve this going further back, just to...
So the point that we don't remember that asphalt being there, that doesn't make a difference for anything?
There's nothing on record.
No, your concerns, all your, I would just say, all your concerns are very valid, and we appreciate them. And, you know, I can assure you, we're not going to vote on this tonight, and it's especially concerning that some of your neighbors say they didn't get notice, so, you know, I would assume...
We'll make sure your neighbor gets the notice.
And we'll keep this hearing open so we can hear from other people next week. Would that be correct, sir?
Last question, what is, the letter said some synthetic material being used, what is that?
If you would like, we could have the architect come and describe that.
Is that more flammable than a regular material? I don't know.
I don't know, we'll ask the architect to step up and explain what the material is. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few photographs that I could show the neighbor.
Please...
Actually, if you put them on the board over there.
Put them on the board, there's some clips on there, then we can zoom in on them, and the, all the public could see it.
Oh. Not going to work very well here. Do we have magnets or something over there? Poor gentleman.
Ready?
Yep. Well, I don't think it's going to... He, he's doing it.
So this is the rear of the existing house, is this, if you look back to that, we're going to move it closer. This is the rear of the existing house, and this is a concrete pad, and it's on the same level.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry, so this is the rear of the house, and this is the grass, and this is the concrete pad, is at the same level of the grass. They're not extending the building to the side, or to this side, or towards your property. The only thing that they are doing is putting a deck eight inches off the ground on top of this existing, non-compliant, concrete pad. Is that clear? Well, the, in the locations, we're building the support for the deck, we are removing the existing concrete pad and pouring footings to 42 inches below grade, which is the frost line for this geography, and then we're putting wood support structure tied to that concrete sonotube footing to support the deck. Is that clear? And it's not attached to the existing house.
Could you, could you address her specific concerns about the product that you brought in?
Yes, the product I brought in...
For the record, the denial, if I'm correct, is not because of the footings, the denial is not because of the quality of the material. The denial is because of the zoning laws, and that's what's really in front of us. I think that, and the building department will, you know, has very strict, you know, regulations and rules that they have to follow. The quality of the material is really not in question. I understand your, your concerns, but the building department will follow through with that. We do not approve or deny something based on the materials.
But just to answer your question, it's a nationally-known product called TimberTech that is used across the United States and in Canada for exterior decks and steps. It's a system similar to, oh, it's a system similar to many other synthetic composite materials, just as AZAC. It's just, just a particular company that the client likes the pattern and the color for. That's why it was chosen.
Thank you.
Building Inspector, do you concur?
Yes.
Any other questions?
No, just a point of information, this is an open deck, correct? No rails, no...
It's an open deck, similar to the concrete pad, just a few inches above it. There's no enclosure over it, there's no side railing or guardrail, so you can step off of it along this perimeter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional, any additional questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, you have more, you can step forward.
How come you know it? It's the city.
If you could, wait till you're up to the mic, please. Thank you.
I don't know why you brought me over here. The only thing, you're gonna, you have your mind already.
No, we don't.
The city, I asked the city, will they go over there and examine the concrete, how many, how it is? And I want the city to inspect it after they finish it. Will it be the same amount, or they will steal a little bit from here, a little bit from there, a little bit from there? In other words, they make it bigger than the existing cement is over there.
Bill, Bill, can you explain your permitting process and your review process, both before construction, during construction, and post-construction?
Yes, the state requires that we do certain inspections prior, during, and after construction, and it has to meet the requirements of what the approved plans show.
So you will confirm that it matches the plans they've proposed to us tonight?
Correct.
Thank you.
Will they allow me to go measure it myself to be satisfied for it? I'm not laughing, I have a problem with his wife. I have a problem with his wife.
Sir, that's between you and the applicant, that has nothing to do with this board, they can't allow you to go on his property, so that's between the two of you.
No, I, I, if the court allow me.
This isn't the court, this is the...
Whatever.
It's a private property...
It's not in their purview, too, they, they're not allowed to allow you on it.
In other words, you will pick up here and there.
Mr. Williams will, will be on the property, and he'll do the measurements and make sure it's in conformity with their plans.
And we can certainly have Mr. Williams come back after it's completed, if it is approved, and talk to him about what he found.
I want the city to go over there and measure the old one, and I want to be satisfied the city let him... And I want to be satisfied, the city let me know that they did that, and they will do it after they finish.
And as was stated, that will be done, and that'll be a permanent part of the record. And you will, you will be able to view that here in Village Hall. So to answer your question, yes, it will be taken care of before, during, and after. And then it will become public record.
Okay, I want to know about it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Anyone else from the public on this issue? All right. I'd like to make a motion to keep the public hearing open until next month.
Second. I second that.
Full in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So, just to be clear, this means that the public hearing remains open. The neighbor who maybe did not receive a notice that could not make it tonight possibly can make it next month, and we can hear from them as well. And if you have any additional concerns, you can bring them up next month, okay?
Or write a letter to the clerk.
The notices in Mr. Williams' office to see what happened with that neighbor and why the neighbor didn't receive it, or if it was sent and it's just never signed for, we'll figure out what happened.
All right. Excellent. Okay?
Do we want to draft, talk about draft resolution?
Well, I think that what we can say is that barring any news, even though I did have concerns about the age of this existing platform, that barring anything dramatically to view us, I would, you know, lean towards being in favor of this project.
The hearing will remain open. We'll make our decision after the public hearing is closed next month, not any time before. All right? The second item on the list is 397 Columbus Avenue. They're looking for an area, area variance for an addition of the rear of the building. Is the applicant here?
Yes, I am. Leonard Brandis, Brandis Architects to Spencer Place, Scarsdale, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Brandis. And why are you here?
I'm here representing the lead builders to improve this building that exists. It's an existing eight-family, nonconforming building on a very small lot against the train tracks. The building itself was built early 1900s, way before any of the codes, zoning codes, and anything else. I believe originally as a four-family, then was, at one point, it looks like it was a 16-family, now it's down to an eight-family. And as far as I know, all the records show that as an eight-family building right now. There are extra doors in the hallway, but we will be closing those up. The existing house has eight one-bedroom apartments. Our proposal is to enlarge the second.
Excuse me, Mr. Brandis, I don't mean to interrupt you. Fellas, people in the back, would you, two things, would you take your, off there and have your conversations in the hall, please?
Thanks.
Thanks, Lynn.
So the existing building has eight one-bedroom apartments. The upper apartments are very subsistence in terms of size, they're only about 450 square feet each. We'd like to increase those to meet more of a state code, which at about 650 square feet each. The total improvement would be about 869 square feet for the two floors and adding, but we're not, no longer adding additional apartments. Once again, we're not adding additional services required by the village, we're not adding additional bathrooms and things like that, we're just adding more square footage to make these more usable apartments. The building has been in disrepair for a while, hasn't been maintained well, and my client just bought this property and wants to renovate. There are several additions that have been put on in the back over the years, and none of, and they're all in bad shape, and there's leaks. We'd like to make it more uniform, make a much better look to the space, and just to maintain, once again, eight bedrooms. I have photographs I'd like to pass to the board of the house and the neighboring houses. The neighboring houses, especially across the street, you'll notice are very tall houses, and they loom fairly high. We are not going to be raising the house very much. We're looking to raise the house about three and a half feet, four feet maximum. We're still staying within code of 35 feet, so we're not going, need a variance for that. The variance that we do need is for the area itself that is the nonconforming, existing FAR is nonconforming. So it's going to, instead of being 0.5, we're going to need 1.77. Right now, it's about 1.56. So we're increasing the FAR, but we will be maintaining, once again, the size. I have here photographs, drawings, rather, of the facade. The front facade, the change is really in the roof, and that we are raising the chimney up a little taller as well. I don't think you're going to actually see that from the front, but that is the only change in the front. From the back, where there are dormers and little shed roofs, and no windows in a lot of these shed roofs, we are going to change those out and create a new, uniform space with new apartments. We weren't planning on doing many changes on the basement and first-floor apartments, except renovating them, changing the kitchens out, changing the bathrooms. But the other floors really need quite a bit. And so on the second and third floors, if you look at the side elevations, where you're going to see most of the change, where you could see all the conglomeration of roof lines that have been added on over the years, we're going to beautify that into a much better-looking building and create a much safer and easier-to-maintain building as well. For example, in terms of the apartment units right now, this is the second floor, there has been additions, additions put on here for bathrooms and closets, and there's no windows in the back there either. So it's not like this, it hasn't been done with any expense. And it's only two rooms right now, and they're very tight. Eleven by 12 is the basic room for living and eating, so it's, it's not very big spaces. The new apartments that we're planning on would have a new entryway, so you can have a full living room, kitchen eating area, bathroom separating the two areas into the bath, into a bedroom. So we're now creating a more usable space. Hopefully, it attracts more usable people. We'll be able to rent the apartments easily without any issues. That's basically where we are.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
So basically, sorry, what you're doing is extending the second and third floor to the footprint of the first floor in the basement. You're actually, it's like squaring off the building, not increasing it in any size, but just extending it out to the same footprint.
Right. We're not extending any, we're not adding any impervious surfaces to the property. We're just extending the upper floors to create livable, more reasonable apartments.
And what you're doing is increasing the size of the rooms, you're not adding any additional rooms.
And just for the public, the, what's at the rear of this property is the train tracks. There's nothing, there's no housing or anything behind the property.
Correct.
And all that addition is in the rear, basically?
Yes, this is all, the front basically stays, you only see the roof change a little bit, the roof lines change a little bit.
Thank you.
I had one question about the basement. Bill, on the plans, I noticed there's only one window on the right side of the house for the basement. Is that to code, once they're finished with this? Does it have enough egress for a basement apartment?
Well, if they make any changes, we'll look at it. But right now, if there's no proposed changes, whatever, there can exist.
Okay, so they, the only changes you've reviewed are the ones going on to the second and third floor. Okay. Thank you.
The apartments in the basement, by the way, do have direct access from the outside. So they're not going through the building, they're going from the outside on each side of the building to get to them. They have doorways on each side here. That's their egress.
So this is an area variance that you're seeking?
Correct.
Yes, not a use variance or a parking variance? Do we need any?
There's no parking. They're existing now.
So we're staying?
We're not changing the number of occupants, we're looking at the same number of occupants.
I see, so it doesn't affect parking. And height variance, you said?
No height variance.
No height variance.
Leading state code with that and the town zoning code on that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
My only question is, Mr. Brandis, Brandis, is the, do you feel that, that this project, should it be approved, would be completed in a timely fashion, based on your experience with this developer?
Absolutely. I've worked a number of times with this developer, and I can't get the drawings out fast enough for them after approvals. So he likes to get them done quickly. The Semenera's, you know, lead corporation, they have really done a lot of good work that I've seen, and I've worked with them on, so I'm very confident they'll do this work quickly and competently and improve the neighborhood.
That's what you say.
It's been my experience with them.
But.
I don't know what they did before me.
You have some other, people that you've represented that have taken our approvals and shopped them, so to speak?
Well, that's not much I can do with that.
Yeah, no, I understand. Can I ask the applicant?
But if you're referring to that project on Yonkers, we are already moving along with bidding right now on that, so.
With what?
We're getting bids on the project right now.
Bidding to do what?
To build it.
Well, it's, it, well, it affects me as to whether or not it's, it's going to be completed. Can I ask the applicant to come to the microphone?
Hi, John Semenera, five Middle Road, Bronxville.
Mr. Semenera, last time you were before us was, what property? Was it Marble Dale?
Yeah, I believe.
The houses, yeah, okay. And those were, I mean, to my recollection, those were finished quite quickly, and it was no hiccups or problems, or you didn't have to come back to this board?
Yeah, I think it was about six to eight months.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing on this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Anyone from the public that would like to step forward and talk about 397 Columbus Avenue? Please step to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tina Cattalde-Curran, and I'm at 395 Columbus Avenue. We're right next to the property. Our concern is, we've lived there for 13 years, and we've never known that there was, we knew there was a lot of people in and out, but that there was eight apartments there. And our concern is just our quality of life, and also our other houses in the, on our block or in that area are going to be able to make small little apartment buildings. And that's basically sort of what it is now, and that's our concern. And also, when, you know, it says that it's a two-family zoning. In the paperwork in the file, it said it was a four-family. When did it go from a four to an eight? I didn't see anything in the file.
Sometime before writing, I'm guessing.
Although, those are very legitimate concerns, first of all. So that's, you know, we appreciate you bringing those up. Bill, do you know the history of the building? Can you explain what you know from the record?
I don't know the dates, but reviewing the file, we did find that it was an eight-family.
As of what date was that?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Was it eight-family prior to any of these, or the most recent? That's the wrong way to ask it. Has it been long enough before the zoning rules came into effect?
Well, zoning's been in effect since 1923.
So prior to that?
No, I believe it was after 23. I would have to look at the applications, but we have applications, shows it as an eight-family.
I mean, I would say we had the same. If someone came to us now and said, I want to turn my single-family home into eight one-bedroom apartments, I don't think.
And also to the parking, and I don't want to give them a hard time by any means. I mean, I'm thrilled that they want to make the property look nicer. I mean, who wouldn't want their area to look nicer in their neighborhood? But it's just concerning if that's allowed in that home, are other homes going to be allowed to do the same thing, and then?
Well, I don't speak for them.
What is your property, if you wouldn't mind? Is it a one?
It's a two-family.
It's a two-family?
Yeah, that whole block on Columbus Avenue, I think, and maybe, I think mostly all those homes, they are two-family.
Further down the street from you was another three or four family.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So many years ago, they were converted. Exactly when? It's hard to tell, but.
Yeah. I just, I just don't.
And do you have children living there?
I have three, yeah, I have three small girls.
Three, great.
And honestly, we've had a lot of riffraff in and out of that apartment building already, and I know it wasn't kept well, and I don't know who maintained it before that. So I'm just concerned, I didn't even know there was eight apart, you know, you look at the property, Leonard said they're very small, there's always a lot of people. But I just want to make sure that this is, you know, are the homes in the area going to be able to, or, you know, have eight families living in there, or conforming their properties?
Those rooms would need a use variance.
Right.
It's almost practically impossible to get.
Right. So I just want to know how that one property was able to do that, and others. Because they're built around the same time my house was built. I think it's the same.
So the problem we have as a zoning board is, the house exists as it is today, right? And so it's very difficult to take away what they already have. So then the question, because then you could do it for everyone, right? If you take away what they already have, and the zoning laws change all the time. And so then the question is, what do we do with this property, right? And we have a developer here who wants to come in and beautify it, make it nicer, bigger, better, without increasing density at all, but maintaining with where it's at. And so.
I just don't know how it got to that, because what I saw in the file.
We all do, yes.
I saw in the file from 1935, it was a four-family. So I'm just wondering how it got from the four-family in 1935 to the eight-family now, and what, you know, has it showed that?
It's a continuous issue in the village. I mean, that, all these properties, you know, so much has gone on in 70 years, I mean.
Right, but if there's documentation from 1935, I would imagine there'd be documentation going forward.
Bill?
There was documentation for an eight-family.
Okay.
It is an approved, it is an approved eight-family.
And like I said, I don't want to give a hard time, I just want to know that, you know, that one, the one, I mean, we're like this close to it, so, I mean, I can, I know what they're having for dinner every night. So, just, you know, for us, even maybe for our property, maybe something that we want to do in the future, we just want to know how that happened. It's sort of like this little apartment building in the middle of this area. And it's just, you know, quality of life, there's 10, 12 parking spots there, and now there's eight families. So how do people?
As, I mean, as member Scalzo said, we're kind of limited in that it already is, is there. There's really, our.
I'll have to look back at the file, because I'm just curious how it got to the four-family, to the eight-family, and if it went through the, the right channels.
I agree, that's a concern, but at this point, what's facing us is, he has an approved eight-family. There's nothing we can do about that. If he wants to, he could just leave the property as is right now, right next to you, with these terrible little apartments, and as you mentioned, whatever you might call it, riffraff. He could leave it that way, and he could leave it as eight bedrooms.
And I appreciate him wanting to make it better, absolutely.
Right, so in essence, from our view, it's that, oh, he's, he's not changing it, he's leaving the same number of apartments and hopefully improving them. So there's not much we can do about the eight-apartment issue.
Okay.
I share your concern that a lot of these, how things got to this stage seemed to kind of vanish in time.
Maybe the town would also reconsider about the parking, because I have three kids. When they start driving, I don't know, where are we going to be parking? You know, maybe something the town can look into, especially, I don't know if they're all filled now, but when they're all filled, it's, it's a problem.
And again, that's another issue where it exists now with, with no parking, and it's.
When you have existing, one of the things is, in an old village like we have, this is a problem that faces this zoning board all the time. And there may come a day when you decide to buy something, and you'll find that that house is old, and it has a lot of situations which you may need to come to this zoning board for assistance in, in explaining that, yes, that was built a long time ago, and we need some space to make more parking. And you'll come to us, and, and so, this is not a, a modern village, meaning that it wasn't developed in the 50s and 60s and 70s. And therefore, there's these complications constantly. One of the things, you know, as a member of this village for a long time, I completely understand your concerns. And I live right up the street, and parking is a, a major concern. And it is what it is. I mean, it is what it is. And what we have to hope for in this village is that the developers that take on a project are people who are stand-up people and are going to do the right thing for the community. And as I had questioned this developer before, they didn't drag their feet on prior developments. I think it's, I'm guessing the address is, it's, it's, they did some houses recently on Marble Dale between Fisher and, and Lincoln. And it was a burned-out house and an empty lot, so.
Yeah, I'm not questioning.
No, 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 but I, I, I would urge you to, to drive by those two properties, because I follow up as a member of the zoning board and watch what the developers do. And some do just do nothing and shop our approvals and.
I think my, more of my concern is, too, is that, that other homes are not going to be faced with this, and we're going to have, like, you know, many little apartments all over the block.
It would be.
That won't happen now.
It would be very.
That doesn't happen now.
It would be very difficult, if not impossible, to do that at this point.
I, I'm still questioning how it even happens in this home.
So are we.
Yeah.
It was what it was, it is what it is, and there's nothing we can do. It was what it was, it is what it is, and there's nothing we can do. Existing is existing. Before the zoning laws were changed, those people are what's called grandfathered.
Right, no, I understand the terminology for that, but like I said, just in the file-
So all we can hope for is that developers that come in and take these older homes that are grandfathered, and do the right thing, and again-
I know he will, I, I, you know, I'm confident that he will do that.
So am I.
Those are our concerns.
Well, thank you.
We thank you, and we appreciate it, and we will take them into consideration when we're making a decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public?
Mr. Semenera want to come up? Did you want to? No, okay.
All right. Well, we're going to leave this open, I'd like to have a motion to keep the public hearing open until next month. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Excellent.
In favor, I-
Aye.
All right, thank you all. Is there any further business? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to close this meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second, have a second? Oh, you're making a motion, okay, I'm sorry, did you make the motion?
Yes, and there was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, good night, Tuckahoe.